I want to call the April 24th, 2025 O'Fallon City Council Meeting to order. Roll call, Bess.
Mayor Hennessy.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Present.
Councilmember Roth.
Present.
Councilmember Hurwicke.
Present.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Bibb.
Present.
Councilmember Coskella.
Present.
Councilmember Kewen.
Present.
Councilmember Ottameyer.
He's excused.
Councilmember Cook.
Present.
Councilmember Agstale.
Present.
If able, if everyone please stand for the invocation by Deacon Richard Tedlock from St. Charles County Chaplain, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Hurwicke.
Let us bow our heads and place ourselves in the presence of God and open our hearts in prayer. Gracious Almighty Father, we come to you before you this evening with humble hearts and grateful spirits. We thank you for the gift of community, for the city which we privilege to call home, O'Fallon. Tonight, Lord, we especially lift up in prayer all the newly elected and re-elected officials of our city. We ask you to pour out your wisdom upon them. May they lead with integrity, courage, and compassion, always seeking the goal of all whom they serve. Bless Mayor Hennessy, councilmembers Wexler, Boyer, Coskella, Taylor, and Cook. As they take their oaths of office, may they be reminded that true leadership is rooted in service and true authority is exercised with humility. We also give you thanks for the dedication of those who have served and now pass on the torch. May their years of effort continue to bear fruit in this community that they have helped to shape. Lord bless this meeting and all who participate in it. Let every discussion be guided by respect, every decision be shaped by justice, and every action inspired by love of neighbor. Send forth your Holy Spirit upon this council and upon all the citizens of O'Fallon. United as all in a common purpose and lead us always in the path of peace. We ask this through Christ's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Folks, you have agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure?
Motion to approve, Hurwicke.
Second, Bibb.
Motion by Councilman Hurwicke, second by Councilman Bibb. Questions or comments? On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. First, a couple things on the presiding officer's report. Ms. Thompson, if you want to meet me down front, we have a couple proclamations.
Okay. We have a proclamation for you here. It says, "Whereas the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922, and whereas VFW Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans, and whereas the basic purpose of the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the Veterans of Foreign Wars is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Now therefore, Bill Hennessy, Mayor and the City Council of the City of O'Fallon, Missouri do hereby urge the citizens of O'Fallon to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through your donations for Buddy Poppies on the day set aside for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our honored dead. VFW Post 5077 Buddy Poppies Day, May 3rd and 4th days, based 3rd and 4th, 2025. I also urge all patriotic citizens to wear a Buddy Poppy as evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens. I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of O'Fallon, Missouri to be affixed this 24th day of April. Signed, Bill Hennessy, Mayor of the great City of O'Fallon."
Thank you very much. I want to thank the mayor and the council members for letting us come tonight to do this. We really appreciate it. You have done this yearly for us for a long time and has really, really appreciated. I'm the junior vice commander, so it's my job to organize all this. Other than that, thank you very much for having us.
Right. I gotta get my container.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Yes, please.
We're gonna have IHOP on K.
Okay.
We got Texas Roadhouse. We lucked, okay.
Let everybody know where you guys are gonna be on those days.
All right, sir. Thank you. We're gonna be at the Texas Roadhouse on Mexico Road for the first time. We got Walmart, the big Walmart, on K, and we also have IHOP on K. Texas Roadhouse is when they open from 11:00 to 6:00 on Saturday and 11:05 on Sunday. Walmart are gonna be from 9:00 till 6:00, and IHOP is from 9:00 till 6:00.
Just want to let everybody know where you'll be, so if they're watching this, they'll know where you guys will be at.
Yep, that's where we're gonna be at.
I appreciate it.
I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Jennifer, you're up, kiddo. This is the most exciting time for me. We get to hear who's gonna be at the Heritage and Freedom Fest.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. I know we have some new elected officials that will be sworn in here shortly, but I just wanted to introduce myself again. My name is Jennifer Hoysington, and I am the festival manager here for the City of O'Fallon. Our group takes care a lot of our community events, and one of our bigger ones that is being presented tonight is the O'Fallon Heritage and Freedom Fest. So I just wanted to share a little bit of updates as we are coming along before we go into the announcement. First and foremost is our parade. We are already collecting those applications for the parade. If you haven't gotten your application in yet, we are still accepting those until June 6th, but please don't wait to the last minute. We also have 34 so far that have signed up for the parade itself, and the theme this year is the Great American Road Trip. So think about those road trips over the years that you've taken. Maybe you saw the world's largest potato in Idaho, and that's something that you want to recreate on your float. You just never know what people think of when it comes to the Great American Road Trip. I do have a surprise coming up this year for the parade. We are going to get three large-scale helium balloons. They're gonna be 12 feet by 12 feet, a red, a white, and a blue star. So we are looking for sponsors to see if somebody would like to participate and being honored by being able to be one of the balloon handlers going down the parade route. So if you know of anybody who would like to pass that information along, we would greatly appreciate it. And, you know, this is gonna take over 2,000 cubic feet of helium to be brought into the parade, so hold on tight. It'll be great. Next, I wanted to share Entertainment Alley. We usually have a couple key features that is located on T.R. Hughes Boulevard each year. We do like to have an artistic piece brought in as we have cultural arts within our division here, and we have glassblowing taking place this year. So they will be creating a variety of pieces, and we will be able to keep those pieces and then include those into our art collection. We also have a NASCAR simulator coming in, so it is a full-size NASCAR where you would be able to get in and drive within the car itself as a simulation. There's some other opportunities as well, but a little bit of fun. I know there's a lot of NASCAR fans in the area. Next is Carnival. We are starting those Carnival sales on June 2nd. They will go through July 2nd, and the advance sale is $25, but after the date closed, it would be 35 onsite. There is a $2 ticketing fee this year, so just to be aware of that, that is something that is set by the people who handle the actual tickets. Then finally, I just wanted to go in and review the hours this year. It is July 3rd, and that's our family night. It is from 4:00 until 10:00. Then on the 4th, we will have our parade kickoff at 9:30 in the morning, and then Festival Grounds will open up at noon and run until 10:00. That is our rock night. And then the 5th is Country Night. We will open at 4:00, and then we will close at 11:00. And the Carnival only, or the Carnival closeout, is on July 6th, and that is from 4:00 to 10:00, and the fireworks are on the 4th and the 5th this year. So unless you all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Otherwise, we'll get straight to the video. Yes?
Jennifer, would you mind telling us, are the tickets for the Carnival available on our website?
Yes, they will be. They're not there yet. The link is not live as of yet until the 2nd of June. Yes, but there will be a link. Everything will be done online. You're welcome. Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you once again for all of the continued support for this event. We do appreciate it, and I would like to go ahead and have them, go ahead and start up the announcement video.
At Heritage and Freedom Fest, our community celebrates America's birthday like no one else with grilling rides, delicious food, and the most colorful parade in the area. Every year, some of the biggest rock and country musical acts in the industry grace the main stage to join us in the party. Now, it's time for the big reveal, the soundtrack to the greatest Independence Day party in the St. Charles region, Heritage and Freedom Fest. Award-winning artists Neon Trees are branching out with a new album, Sink Your Teeth, energizing crowds across the country with their bombastic indie rock prowess. Everybody talks about how the timeless sound of Neon Trees will have you jamming into the night. With their explosive blend of retro pop and new wave rock and engaging performance style, Neon Trees is sure to keep you begging for more. We've got you covered. After capturing hearts on American Idol, this country music star's powerful voice has entered her glory days. Multi-platinum star Gabby Barrett has already surpassed 3 billion streams with her debut single, "I Hope," reaching the top three on the Billboard 100 and topping the country music charts for 27 weeks. As her career skyrockets into the stratosphere, make sure you catch her on the rise at Heritage and Freedom Fest, and you'll see why she's one of the good ones. What are you waiting for? Join us and our amazing headliners, Neon Trees and Gabby Barrett, at this year's Heritage and Freedom Fest.
All right. Now we get to say goodbye to a couple folks. Ms. Smith, you want to come on down? Dean, I have a plaque for you. Says, "Presented to Deanna Smith in grateful appreciation, your outstanding dedicated service to the residents and city staff of the City of O'Fallon, Missouri. Thank you from Mayor Hennessy, City Council, and the city staff. Councilmember from Ward 1 from 2019 to 2025. Wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors and good luck."
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Hennessy. So first, I want to thank staff. I want to start off with that because you have to have a lot of patience with us, especially when we're new. So thank you. It's been great working with you. And then to my fellow council members, it's been great working with you as well, along with you, Kevin. So, you found that funny, huh? So I just kind of want to step back a little bit, you know, because I have said this before as I ran both times, you know, and I really believe strongly that as a servant leader, I believe that we're called to use our skills to bless and lift up others. So that has been my driving motivation over the last six years, utilizing my business and leadership experience to better our community. It has been both an honor and a pleasure to serve. I have thoroughly enjoyed meeting and talking with many residents and business owners, and some of them have actually become friends. So thank you for Ward 1 for putting your trust in me over the last six years. I'd also like to thank my family for their support throughout the six years because without them, it wouldn't be possible, right? That's what we do everything for, is our families. As I move on, I'll be focusing more time with my family, which includes a new grandbaby in August, so that's exciting. So my career, I travel a lot for work, and so there's a lot of great things happening at my job, so I'll be focusing on that as well. And also possibly writing a book. It's on one of my bucket list items, so, you know, looking at that as well. So to close, I'd like to congratulate all the newly elected and the re-elected and wish everybody good luck. Thank you.
Mr. Hurwicke, or as we like to call him, Duke. Mr. Hurwicke, I have a plaque for you. In grateful appreciation for your outstanding dedicated service to the residents and the city staff of the great City of O'Fallon, Missouri. Thank you from myself, city council, and city staff, and councilmember from Ward 2 April 2016 to April 2025, and for your leadership as being president pro temp for three times? God, you want to keep that? But thank you for your nine years of service to the residents of Ward 2. Great. Wish you all the best of luck in your future endeavors.
You know, the decision to stand before you today was not an easy one for me. I have been truly blessed, lucky, and honored to be of service to this great City of O'Fallon for the past nine years. What a privilege it has been. To get to this point was not easy. It was earned, and required a lot of hard work and blood, sweat, and tears. I would not have it any other way because it meant so much more, and I truly believe it was God's plan for me to last nine years. But all this really is not possible without a lot of thank yous. First off, I want to thank the residents of Ward 2 and the residents of O'Fallon for having the faith and trusting me to allow me to serve you these past nine years. It's been an honor and a privilege. To city staff, we are truly lucky as a city to have such a great staff, from our managing directors down to the individuals who service our communities each and every day, filling potholes, picking up our trash, to whatever needs that you as a resident have. They are great people, and I'm so honored to get to know them. Thank you for all the help you provided me, the guidance, support. I really had a loss of words. We are truly lucky to have our city staff we have. To my fellow and current past councilmen or members, and we're honored to have a few in attendance here tonight, former councilman and current state rep Dave Hemmon.
Hi, Dave.
Former councilman Mike Feeney. And former councilman Bob Howe.
What's up, Bobby?
And to my wardmates over the nine years, Rose Mac and my current wardmate Lisa Thompson, along with the mayor. Thank you to all you for all your help, your support, your guidance, your trust in me, or guidance, I mean, your faith in me, our conversations, learning from you in order to how to better serve this city. It's working together as a team, always last years as a council, many different councils, were able to do a lot of great things, and I'm gonna get into a few of those here in a minute, but it wouldn't be without each of us working together. So thank you. To Mr. O'Keefe, thank you for all your help and guidance over the years, especially those late-night conversations after a council meeting. I'll treasure those forever. To Mr. Snowden, we are truly blessed to have a city administrator as Mike Snowden today. Over my nine years, we had three different city administrators. Mike has truly helped lead the city and bring the city together to a place that we're running like a fine-tune machine because of his leadership, and it shows through the morale completely through the city. So Mike, I thank you for everything you do for the city. I thank you for everything you've done for me. Keep up the good work, and God bless you.
Thank you, sir.
To my family and friends, and to those that helped me, you know, campaign those many years ago and have, you know, helped me throughout the years for all the support you've given me. To my parents, God bless, rest your soul, and God bless you. Thank you for raising me for the person that I am today. To my children for allowing me to do this and serve you, for allowing me to miss multiple events that they had during those many Thursday nights over the years, or HOA meetings, or et cetera, that needed my presence in order to be of service. And especially to my daughter, who I'm missing a soccer game tonight because of this. And finally, to my wife, who's here in attendance tonight, for not only putting up with me the last almost 25 years, but especially putting up with me for the last nine years and my testiness and my crabby-ness, whatever else you get from doing this because you have other things on your mind, but also have things at home that you have to deal with. Thank you for your love and support. I wouldn't be able to do this without her. Just like everybody else here on the council, you wouldn't be able to do this, as Councilwoman Smith said, you wouldn't be able to do this without your spouse's support. So babe, I love you, and thank you. It's been a quieter ride these last nine years, to be part of the decision-making that has helped shape our future, not of our city, not just for the now, but more importantly, for the future. We're here to help decide the future. The list of accomplishments is quite beautiful and extraordinary over these last nine years. We've done a lot as a city. So I look back over the nine years, I have a list here, though it's too far to mention. I thought I was gonna do a Senate filibuster at first to keep me up here for as long as possible, but I realized the mayor would probably end up turning to a pumpkin, so... So I'm only gonna look back at the last nine years, and I'm gonna really focus on four things that particularly come in mind. The first one is my time as liaison for my first two years on the council to Dara Myak. At the time, several members of the council thought the mayor was messing with me. He may have been, Bill, I don't know. But I took it as a challenge, a challenge to prove to myself that I could do it, a challenge that I could prove to others that I wasn't a fluke that got elected. Over those three years, I attended over 30 Dara graduations, and I spoke to at three different school years. The last group of those kids are now seniors in high schools. Unbelievable. And we're graduating within the next month. And then also during that time, we did a heroin walk. We were able to put together a heroin walk under some guidance I had, but it wasn't as successful as I'd like to be, but we were able to get my act to do something, and I'm very proud of that. As the mayor mentioned earlier, president pro temp, I served as president pro temp three and a half years. Roughly almost 40% of my time on the council, I served you guys as president pro temp, and I thank you for having your faith and trusting me to do that for you. The first budget that I participated in for the budget year 2017 in October 2016, at the time, there was a lot of talk, oh, we need additional funding for streets, but nobody would do any action. It was just talk. There was no additional funding in the budget. So I took it upon myself to comb through the budget, and I challenged the budget, finding 6 million potential funding that we agreed upon 3 million. Staff didn't really like me too much at the time because I challenged them on everything, but it was needed. And I look at it now, and I think deep down, I really feel like this helped to pave the way for the city to what we have today in our street process for street prayers improvement. I feel personally helped guide and empower the city staff to take on those efforts because now it showed to them that the city was serious, that the city council was serious, and it was no more, it wasn't words anymore, it was now action. And just to say to everybody out there, streets is a never-ending battle. We're never gonna win it. It's impossible. Our environment doesn't allow it. I learned so much more about concrete than I ever imagined over my nine years. Those accountants like, whoa, concrete, and you just drive on it. Oh, there's more to it? Oh, wow. But what we have done since, over these nine years, we have produced an annual pavement manual, the city has. We have an annual plan that rotates from each ward, so that way something's being done in each ward every year. We have changed the code enforcement, the code specs, to now where you have five inches of solid underlay compact rock and seven inches of concrete that hopefully will last the lifetime that we expect. And more importantly, we have taken a $500,000 budget to a $5 million budget. And finally, the last thing that comes to mind is the Path of Heroes program. It all started as a little, just nugget of idea to help honor fallen soldier Jared Schmitz. The city staff helped grow into what it is today, something that's truly remarkable and something that everyone in the city, while they drive around, can drive by a fallen soldier named that was once a resident of this great city, and take time to remember them, recognize them, and hopefully say a little prayer for them. But before I leave today, I want to share with you my thoughts for the future for the next council. You didn't think you were gonna get away that easy. As I view the role of government, in particular city municipal government, I feel the foundation of service is set in three main categories, or three main pillars. of service is set in three main categories, or three main pillars: safety, infrastructure, and community. And community being parks, recreation, entertainment, et cetera. But all those are supported by our taxes and our economic development. And the key is the growth of economic development to keep those services going. So first off, safety. Please continue moving forward with the police regional training facility. It's much needed for our residents, not only in our community, but our communities that are around us. We need to have the safest streets possible. We already do, but there's no reason why we can't have safer. Keep providing the state of equipment for our officers and dispatch for that use and service to our residents. And continue to look at our code and look for ways to provide more safety to our residents through our code in a more efficient and meaningful way. Infrastructure, continue with the street improvement projects. If you can find more money, that's great. Continue with their city beautification. We have one of the most beautiful cities in the world thanks to our landscaping department. Continue to make sure that's funded and moves forward. And hopefully eventually find the funding and for that much-needed new water tower on the north side of town. For parks and rec and entertainment, new lighting for Aussies, we already approved, and hopefully tonight we'll approve the new turf for Aussies fields. So that way, no more rainouts, kids continue to play, and we can use those fields every weekend. Continue the Path of Heroes program. Continue to find ways to, and fund the improvements to the theater upstairs on the second level. And finally, the most important thing, a few years ago, we approved a Parks and Rec master plan. That plan goes out multiple years, but I think, in my opinion, that plan needs to be put in motion now. So find a way to get that in motion now. But again, these are not possible unless you have continued growth through our economic development. So I challenge you, the next council, through the next strategic planning, to focus on economic development strategies in the following areas, and mostly we have focused on and talked about before, but continue to focus on them. Downtown, and also getting you to recognize, the only way downtown, in my opinion, is going to succeed is you have to have mixed use. You have to bite the bullet on that in some cases, but mixed use is what's needed for downtown to succeed. Brian and veterans, we already approved the plan for that. Let's make sure that plan moves forward and doesn't fail. Kay and Outer 64, the Mercy property and Desco property, hopefully reengage Mercy, and do not, I repeat, do not approve residential on that property. And finally, the retail jewel, in my opinion, Caledonia, let's try to land that big fish there. These areas are key for financial viability to further push this great city forward as not only the place, as not only a place to live, but as a place to work, live, and play on a continuing basis. There will be naysayers, know that, but stay strong and make decisions that will benefit the future, not the now, but the future. Again, thank you. It's been an honor and a privilege, and God bless the great city of O'Fallon. Duke out.
First speaker is Mr. Deenoff.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deenoff, city public advocate. First thing I'd like to speak about is bill number 7741 in old business. It's a conditional use permit for yet more apartments. I think the city has been loud and clear, and the residents have been loud and clear that they are sick and tired of apartment complexes, which drain city services, which provides no sales taxes, and is actually going to cost taxpayers money in providing services, not only at this city, but for the fire protection district and the ambulance district. So I ask you to defeat bill number 7741. They went from 8,500 square feet down to less than, I believe, 800 square feet. So that's a big, huge difference in terms of sales tax for our city that we desperately are in search of. Bill number 7743, again, Meadowwood Estates, the retirement community, yeah, we do need retirement communities, but they also need to pony up and be cognizant of their promise to the city that they're going to provide commercial opportunities along Tom Ginever Boulevard. The roadway contribution is a slap in the face to taxpayers, and it's a joke. The $1.8 million roundabout the citizens of North O'Fallon do not want, and yet this council keeps moving forward with that project. The next issue I'd like to talk about is Aussie Sports Complex, $4.1 million in turf. Defeat this awful expenditure that we just cannot afford. The expectancy of the turf is seven years, and then you'll have to replace it. It's costing $600,000 a field? Are you going to lay off field employees and the Parks and Recreation Department? And what is the return on investment? You didn't put this out for a public bid, but yet you went through a co-op that nobody's ever heard of. And so you haven't disclosed exactly what that bid process was exactly in a transparent format to citizens. And finally, on the agenda is a $10.1 million project. It's a resolution D on your new agenda for reverse osmosis at the general, at the water treatment plant improvement project. It's one-third over budget. $1.9 million from the base bid. Approximately, you said it was going to be $7 million, now it's $9.1 million. And then $1.2 million in alternates. Do we really need fencing around that's already there at this complex? There's a lot of questions of this project, and it just seems like it's a tax-and-spend city council, and you don't have care of where the money or how the money is afforded.
Mr. Deenoff, your time's up, sir. Our next speaker is Jamie Cronk.
My name is Jamie Cronk, and I live at 1611 Platinum Court for about three more weeks. I've lived in O'Fallon for 69 years, and I'm vacating, not because of you guys. You guys are doing a great job. We're going to swear in some new people tonight who are going to continue to do that great job. And Mr. Deenoff shouldn't live here because he's never happy about anything. So I am pleased with what you're doing. I will continue to watch you, though, and I want to make sure that everybody up here continues to keep positive thoughts for O'Fallon. Let's get rid of the negative people. Thank you.
Jamie, before you go, I just want to thank you for your years of service to this great city of O'Fallon, whether what board or commission it was on, all your years of service to this great city, and your insight. So on behalf of myself and this great city, thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
Ward three.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to councilmember Smith, councilmember Hurwicke, and councilmember Rademeyer. They've been on the board the entire time that I have. I've looked up to them, have confided in them, asked them for any kind of, you know, help with ideas or, you know, just the counsel that they've been able to provide me has been very helpful. I know they're going to continue to do great things in the community, and I look forward to keeping in touch with them. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Beb.
Thank you, Mayor. Just echo somewhat Mr. Kuskala said, kind of challenge the council members that are retiring to stay involved, keep contributing to the city, and also look forward to the new three that are taking office tonight.
Thank you, sir. Ward four, Mr. Kewen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Likewise, I'd like to thank councilwoman Smith and councilman Hurwicke for their time here. I know we haven't always voted the same way. We haven't always agreed on everything that we voted on. However, we've always been very respectful and very civil in our conversations and discussions. And we all know that each of the three of us, even if we vote differently up here from the dais, we know that all of our hearts are in the right place. We want what's best for our city. So thank you both for teaching me, for working with me, for working with this council, and helping the last six years and nine years respectively go as they have. I like the direction the city is going. I hope it continues going that way. Also, I'd like to welcome the three incoming council people. Welcome. It's a hard job. I know you know that. If you have any questions, concerns, I promise you, I speak for the remainder of us up here. We're all here to help. So please don't hesitate to ask questions. Please don't hesitate to ask for help. Welcome, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Ward five.
Thank you, Mayor. Echo everybody else, but again, Deena, it's been fun. I've enjoyed working with you. Duke, I think that's the most I've heard you speak in the total of nine years that you've been on, but you did a great speech, and we're going to miss you. You've had a lot to add to the council, and we appreciate everything that you brought to the council. And to all the new members that are coming on, looking forward to working with you. We're going to make a great council for the city, and we're always going to put the city's needs first. So looking forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Ms. Ragsdale.
Thank you. I want to say a special goodbye to councilmember Hurwicke and Smith. Duke, I have to call you Duke because I just love that, it humanizes you, but as a fellow accountant, you just gave me incentive to do the best job that I can do on the my act as my act liaison, so thank you for that. I've hoped to do it justice like you did. But as Kewen mentioned, when we, sometimes we disagree on this dais, but when we walk away, we try and get along as much as we can. And one thing that I will always remember is, on a recent trip that Duke took, he came back knowing that, I went to school at Auburn University, he came back with an AU cardboard cutout for me, and I treasure that, so thank you for that.
Is that Alabama University?
It is. There is no, that school university. I'm sorry. My parents taught me not to say four-letter words, so I can't even address what he's getting at. But to you, Deena, I just want to say that in the two years that I've been on the council, you have been a great mentor and a great friend, and I am really going to miss you and all of our heart-to-heart conversations that we've had, so thank you for that. I'm sorry, I really didn't expect to get so emotional, but welcome to the three new members that are coming on. And just so everybody on this dais knows, I just found out today that Amanda also went to school at Auburn University, so I'm very excited that 20% of this council went to Auburn, and you never know, we might just start the Auburn caucus. I am excited that, just on Tuesday night, I attended my first DARE graduation with Fessopoint Elementary School, and that was really exciting. I was glad to do that. Kind of surprised that no one has mentioned yet the groundbreaking for public works, but I'm sure Mr. Snowden will talk about that in his comments. And then the final thing that I have is, Sunday is Dedication Day. America 250 Celebration starts off this Sunday. The program begins at 1:00 at Fort Zumwalt Park, and the Heald House and the fort will be open for tours afterwards, so I hope to see all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward one.
Thank you, Mayor. Linda, I have something for you, since you're taking my act. When I had my act, we did a video for No Hunger Holiday, and actually Mayor Hennessy got a pie in the face during the video, so you can get him back. Thank you, everyone, for the well wishes. I'm definitely going to miss working with this council. Mr. Hurwicke also with you as well. I remember the first meeting I ever came to, when I was running, you came up and talked to me to just find out a little bit about me, so thank you for everything as well. My last thing that I want to do is want to highlight a Ward one business. So if you live in North O'Fallon, you have to know Mario and Dos Primos, right? I mean, you know, who doesn't know Mario? Mario has started a second business, and it's actually Mario's Cafe. I actually do have his menu here. He's actually doing breakfast and lunch and dinner. He has, the new location is actually at 121 O'Fallon Plaza. So if you knew where Made Today Cafe was, where the caboose was there off of Main Street, he's actually in that, in that building. So like I said, they opened up today. Love to see everyone to get out and support Mario. Thank you.
And if I believe I had, it was two or three takes for the pie in the face, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, that was.
Uh huh. They couldn't get it right the first time. Mr. Roth.
Yes, councilman Mayor. See how long I can get through before my voice goes.
Okay, you're done.
I just want to say thanks to Duke down there for whatever questions I had and help. And I want to especially thank Ms. Smith, or Councilman Smith, for all the 20 questions I've had every night for, and she was very patiently with me. And I just want to wish you the best and have fun with that new grandson. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Certainly.
Ward two.
I also want to wish everybody outgoing, our three outgoing members, best of luck in your future. I know you're going to stick around and do great things in the city, and don't be strangers, for sure. And a special thank you to my wardmate, Duke. I ran against Duke for his seat in 2019, which was his second term, and lost to him, and I'm so thankful that I lost to him because I was able to not only watch him in Rose for another year, but then he welcomed me so graciously onto the council the next year, and I've learned so much from him in our time together. So five years, I suppose, we've been up here together, so just really happy the way things turned out. And I'm going to miss you, but I'm happy to carry on your path of heroes for you. I think that that was a phenomenal thing that you did for the city, along with city staff, and I'm honored to be able to continue that for you.
Mentioned, ward-winning path of heroes.
Oh, yes. A ward-winning, state award-winning path of heroes, absolutely. So yeah, don't be strangers.
Mr. Hurwicke.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, apparently I spoke already too much. I mean, I think I've said more other times, Debbie, maybe not continuously debating on stuff. First off, Lisa didn't mention, she did kick my butt, though, in the mayor's youth advisory council forum that year that she lost to me. I mean, killed me. Just a couple things, Councilwoman Smith, good luck to you. Have fun with that grandbaby, and I look forward to reading your book. And then everybody else, thank you for all the warm wishes. And finally, to the new incoming council members, welcome. Welcome to a life of service. Best of luck to you, and good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Snowden.
Thank you, Mayor. On April 19th, following a heavy rainstorm, I was notified that several of our alluvial wells were out of service, likely due to lightning strikes. All wells returned to service except for well number three, which sustained catastrophic failure of a pump motor. I authorized an emergency repair of the pump motor, which was completed earlier this week. The total cost of that repair is $13,765.20. Even though I emailed you on the 19th, please consider this my official notification to you for the record. In response to a support request from Environmental Services, 25 dedicated volunteers and five city employees from multiple departments came together to assemble an incredible 23,000 information packets in just three weeks. That totaled 240 hours of hard work. Thanks to their outstanding teamwork and enthusiasm, Environmental Services successfully delivered those packets to every O'Fallon resident with their new recycling can. A huge thank you to each and every one of them for their amazing effort, and a very Happy Volunteer Month to all of our phenomenal volunteers. As councilmember Ragsdale mentioned, the city broke ground on its new public works and fleet facility earlier today. I can't do justice to how that went, so I'll just urge you all to go onto our website and view the video when it's placed on there, probably tomorrow. I always enjoy using this time to brag about our employees, and tonight's no exception. We recently heard from the owner of Small Batch Winery, who wanted us to know what a great job our management analyst Jill Reitzner did by helping him straighten out his caterer's license so he can be a vendor at city events like Jammin' and Fall into the Arts. I'd like to also extend my thanks to Jill for everything she does for our citizens and business owners. And lastly, on behalf of all staff, I'd like to thank councilmember Smith for her years of service to our community, and I'd like to thank councilmember Hurwicke for his service, including his three and a half years as president pro temp. In doing so, he became a trusted advisor to our senior staff and was very helpful to all of us. to all of us, and I want to thank him for that. It was a pleasure to work closely with you, sir. And that's all I have tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. Brings total business, brings the bill 7741. Motion for second reading by title only.
Cascola.
Motion by Cascola, second.
Bib.
Second by Councilman Bib. All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill number 7741, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to the owner of Caledonia Flats to allow residential dwellings in a non-residential structure under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 211 Rushway within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you. Motion final passage.
Cascola.
Motion by Cascola, second.
Bib.
Second by Councilman Bib. Questions or comments? Mr. Kewen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is one of those bills that can be a little bit of a challenge sometimes. On the one hand, we have Eotech, a very well-known, very high-end optics company, wants to locate a store in this building and a shooting... A virtual shooting range in the adjacent hotel, or the hotel that's right across the street, and I would welcome that a great deal. On the other hand, we have a bunch of one-bedroom apartments going in the center of a complex that is dedicated to children's sports and to children's entertainment. We've got the old theater being renovated to attract more indoor sports. We've got the soccer fields. And one-bedroom apartments, I mean, these are obviously not gonna be families. These are gonna be singles or maybe couples with no kids. In addition, it is taking up some prime real estate that could actually be used for commercial. So, we have the possible good and the possible bad. Why do I tell all you this? Because, well, my opinion is the bad outweighs the good on this particular bill, and unfortunately for, you know, I hope Eotech can find another spot here in the O'Fallon area, but I can't in my mind justify taking up that many square feet of potential commercial space for a bunch of one-bedroom apartments and one tiny little shop. So, my vote tonight will be no.
Anybody else? Seeing none. Councilmembers, cast your vote.
The voting's now closed.
Seven yes, two no. 7741 passed, becomes ordinance number?
7201.
72... 72... 7201, correct?
Yes.
Thank you, Bess. Brings the bill 7742. Motion for second reading by title only. Motion by Councilman Thompson. Do I have a second?
Hurwick.
Second by Councilman Hurwick. All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill number 7742, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to 1155 Technology LLC to allow a hotel under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located on Technology Drive near Weldon Spring Road within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you. Motion final passage.
Thompson.
Motion by Councilwoman Thompson, second.
Hurwick.
Second by Councilman Hurwick. Questions or comments? Seeing none. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Nine yes, zero no. 7742 passed, becomes ordinance number?
7202.
7202. Thank you, Bess. Brings the bill 7743. Motion for second reading by title only.
Smith.
Motion by Councilwoman Smith, second.
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill number 7743, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance approving a final plan for Meadowwood Estates Phase Three, subject to certain conditions and requirements.
Motion final passage.
Smith.
Motion by Councilwoman Smith, second.
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. Questions or comments? Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. So, at our last meeting, there was a lot of conversation around this, that there was supposed to be some commercial property with this. The developer was having a hard time filling that commercial property. However, we are gonna, you know, I'm still in favor of moving forward with this because we have a lot of seniors in our community that need housing, and every time they actually put a development up, there's a waiting list. In fact, you know, Jamie, at the last meeting, shared with us that she even tried to get in there before moving to Florida. So, it's definitely needed for our community, regardless of the commercial. We will fill it up, and we need to have that housing for our residents that's also affordable as well. Thank you.
Totally agree, ma'am. Anybody else? Ms. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if they're here tonight. Do you see them in the audience? They're back here. Okay. As I personally feel like we definitely need more senior housing. Hillman Place, Genemen, and Woodbury have all contacted me with complaints about services not being taken care of. So, I'm hesitant to have you build another facility because the ones that you have are not being ran very well, and I know it's hard to get help. And my mom lived in one of these places also, but it was hard to even get somebody to come change a light bulb. Complaints of trash not being taken for weeks, like the dumpsters were overflowing. Simple repairs around there, getting managers to stay on staff. I mean, I've had all three of these different places call me with complaints. So, as much as I know we need senior housing, and I probably will be a yes, but I really, really am stressing to you to take care of the ones that you have because these seniors are relying on you, and they need the facilities to be taken care of. And some of them are safety issues. You know, concrete that is shifted, and they're gonna trip and fall, you know, things like that. So, please, I'm just begging you to get the ones that you have and take care of them.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Nine yes, zero no. 7743 passed, becomes ordinance number?
7203.
7203. Thank you, Bess. Brings the bill 7744. Motion for second reading by title only.
Hurwick.
Motion by Councilman Hurwick, second.
Cascola.
Second by Cascola. All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill number 7744, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance amending certain provisions of Title IV Land Use, Chapter 400, related to regulations pertaining to development activities within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Motion final passage.
Hurwick.
Councilman Hurwick, second.
Cascola.
Second by Cascola. Questions or comments? Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Nine yes, zero no. Bill 7744 passed, becomes ordinance number?
7204.
7204. Thank you, Bess. Resolution 410, 2025D is on the table. Do I have a motion to remove it from the table?
So moved, Bib.
Motion by Councilman Bib, second.
Cascola.
Second by Cascola. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? We do have a .1 version. Do I have a motion to accept the .1 version? I'll motion that, Bib.
Amended by the .1.
Amended by the .1. Good. That's what I said.
Yeah. That's how it'll show in the minutes.
All right. Motion to accept the .1 version amended by Mr. Bib. Do I have a second?
Cascola.
Second by Cascola. Questions or comments on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? Motion passes. Questions or comments on Resolution 410, 2025D dot 1? Ms. Ragsdale.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that while I think artificial turf looks nice, my concern... My father was in landscape maintenance for probably 40, 50 years, and I've heard so many stories of things that he has told me over the years, research that he has done. Artificial turf actually causes more injuries, and yes, I think it's great that maybe we're eliminating potential rainouts, but if our children are subject to being injured more because we're going with artificial turf, I just can't see us doing that. And if you look around, like Major League Baseball, for example, a lot of their fields in the 80s had astroturf, and they're now going back to real turf. And so, for that reason, the safety of our kids, I'm gonna have to be a no vote on that resolution.
Okay. Anybody else? Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. So, my youngest daughter's a soccer player ever since she was five. She, you know, she played all through high school, one year in college, and I will just tell you that the turf was much safer for them to play on. There was lots of ankles that were twisted, lots of injuries with divots and holes in the ground, so from the rain, and lots of tournaments that were canceled, so for that, I mean, I'm a yes on this.
Okay. Anybody else? Seeing none. Do I have a motion second to introduce?
Bib.
Motion by Councilman Bib, second.
Cascola.
Second by Cascola. All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? Mr. O'Keefe.
Resolution 410, 2025D dot 1. Resolution authorizing an agreement with ATG Ram Industries LLC, providing for the design and installation of synthetic turf at the Ozzy Smith Sports Complex in an amount not to exceed $4,100,000.
Thank you. Motion second to approve?
Bib.
Motion by Councilman Bib, second.
Cascola.
Second by Cascola. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Eight yes, one no. Resolution 410, 2025D 1 has been approved. Do I have a motion second to accept the 2025 general municipal election results?
So moved, Hurwick.
Motion by Councilman Hurwick. Do I have a second?
Thompson.
Second by Councilwoman Cook. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? Motion passes. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Signed, aye.
So moved, Hurwick.
Motion by Councilman Hurwick, second.
Bib.
Second by Councilman Ragsdale. All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? We are adjourned. Test, one, two. I don't... Test, one, two. There we go. All right, folks, here we go. Ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. We're getting ready to get started.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Oliver Wexler.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications.
That I possess all of the qualifications.
For the position of councilmember.
For the position of councilmember.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of this state.
Provisions of all laws of this state.
Affecting charter cities.
Affecting charter cities.
And the ordinances of the city of O'Fallon.
And the ordinances of the city of O'Fallon.
And faithfully demean myself.
And faithfully demean myself.
And the office of councilmember Ward one.
And the office of councilmember Ward one.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Well, I didn't really prepare anything, but I just want to say thank you to the citizens of Ward one and all the citizens of O'Fallon, and of course, my great support system, which is mostly standing here behind me, and I look forward to serving everybody in the city of O'Fallon. Thank you.
I state your name.
I, Brian Boyer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications.
That I possess all the qualifications.
For the position of councilmember.
For the position of councilmember.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of this state.
The provisions of all laws of this state.
Affecting charter cities.
Affecting charter cities.
And the ordinances of the city of O'Fallon.
And the ordinances of the city of O'Fallon.
And faithfully demean myself.
And faithfully demean myself.
And the office of councilmember Ward two.
And the office of councilmember Ward two.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, citizens of O'Fallon, citizens of Ward two, my family here, my family at home, the people that couldn't make it here. Duke just raised the bar, so I already felt the stress. He just... Here you go again, sitting in a seat. So, this is even worse. But here, I hope in three years, he can look back and say, "I'm proud of you, Brian. I'm proud that you're here," and everyone that voted for me, I hope you... Anyone that's sitting in Ward two can look to me to say that same thing, that I'm glad that you're there, and I'm proud that you're part of O'Fallon. So, thank you, and I'm here to serve. So, thank you.
I state your name.
I, Steve Cascola.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications.
That I possess all of the qualifications.
For the position of councilmember.
For the position of councilmember.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of this state.
The provisions of all laws of this state.
Affecting charter cities.
Affecting charter cities.
And the ordinances of the city of O'Fallon.
And the ordinances of the city of O'Fallon.
And faithfully demean myself.
And faithfully demean myself.
And the office of councilmember Ward three.
And the office of councilmember Ward three.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody, for being here. I first want to thank my family. My oldest daughter couldn't be here. daughter couldn't be here. She had to work, which is good, setting a good example, I guess, for her little sisters. I couldn't do this without them. They're the ones that give up the most for me to be out doing my passion, which is servant leadership. Again, thank you to the residents for showing up and trusting me for another term, and God bless everybody. Thank you.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Amanda Taylor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications.
That I possess all the qualifications.
For the position of council member.
For the position of council member.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of this state.
The provisions of all laws of the state.
Affecting charter cities.
Affecting charter cities.
And the ordinances of the City of O'Fallon.
And the ordinances of the City of O'Fallon.
And faithfully demean myself.
And faithfully demean myself.
And the office of Councilmember Ward 4.
Of the office of Councilmember Ward 4.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I do have a speech, but I promise it's not as long as Duke's. Well, I'm honored and incredibly grateful to have just taken the oath of office as your newest council member of O'Fallon Ward 4. This is a moment I'll never forget, not just because of what it means for me, but because of what it represents for all of us. This seat doesn't belong to me. It belongs to the people of Ward 4, and I promise to carry your voices, your concerns, and your hopes into every conversation and every decision that comes across this council. I will always remember who I work for, and that is you. To everyone who came out tonight to support me, to those who knocked doors with me, who shared their stories, supported my campaign, and are simply believed in the need for fresh leadership, thank you. This victory is ours, and I'm proud to share it with you all. I'd also like to thank my family, my friends, and my incredible support team. Your unwavering belief in me made this moment possible because you reminded me every single day that we were building something bigger than ourselves. Moving forward, I will be focused on listening, learning, and leading. I'll work to improve our roads, our infrastructure, and to support responsible growth in our city. But most of all, I will work to build trust through transparency, accessibility, and action. Whether you voted for me or not, I will represent you all. My door is open, my phone is on, and I'm here to serve. Thank you.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Debbie Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications.
That I possess all the qualifications.
For the position of council member.
For the position of council member.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of this state.
Provisions of all laws of this state.
Affecting charter cities.
Affecting charter cities.
And the ordinances of the City of O'Fallon.
And the ordinances, that's hard to say, of the City of O'Fallon.
And faithfully demean myself.
And faithfully demean myself.
And the office of Councilmember Ward 5.
And the office of Councilmember Ward 5.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I'll keep it short. I want to thank everyone for the opportunity to serve. Again, Ward 5, I've enjoyed serving. I find it as a privilege and an honor, and I hope I continue to do a good job, and let's see what the city moves forward to. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Bill Hennessy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications.
That I possess all the qualifications.
For the position of mayor.
For the position of mayor.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of this state.
Provisions of all laws of this state.
Affecting charter cities.
Affecting charter cities.
And the ordinances of the City of O'Fallon.
And the ordinances of the City of O'Fallon.
And faithfully demean myself.
And faithfully demean myself.
And the office of the mayor.
And the office of the mayor.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
First of all, on behalf of my wife, Debbie, my grandson, Micah, my son, Bruce, my daughter who's watching on TV, my mother who's watching on TV, thank you for your support for this last 25 years to the residents of the great City of O'Fallon, for your support in me, for running unopposed. You know, it was a blessing. I love doing this job, and I've told my wife that once I stop enjoying it, it's when I'll stop doing it, because I love this city. I love what we've done with this city, and we could not do it without the residents of the great City of O'Fallon, with our great city staff. You know, as you heard all the councilmen up here say, what a great staff we have. We have, I would put this staff above any staff in this state or in this country. I couldn't do this job without their support, without the support of the family, without the support of the 94,000 residents of this great city. I promise you that we will continue to keep this city growing, be one of the safe places to live, with our police department. We got great things coming, folks. We got great things coming in this great city, and I look forward, over the next four years, to showing you what we have in this great city. So, God bless. Thank you very much.
So, we're going to take about a 10-minute break. There's cupcakes and water out there, so if you want to grab a cupcake, all except for the Cascola kids. No cupcakes for the Cascola kids. So, we'll see you in about 10 minutes. On call to order, the newly-elected O'Fallon City Council Order Roll Call, Bess.
Mayor Hennessy.
Present.
Councilmember Wexler.
Present.
Councilmember Roth.
Present.
Councilmember Boyer.
Present.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Bib.
Here.
Councilmember Cascola.
Present.
Councilmember Kewen.
Present.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Cook.
Present.
Councilmember Ragsdale.
Present.
All right. Under the Presiding Officer's report, under 001, I'd have a motion to ratify my appointments that are listed on your agenda. I'm not reading them all.
Move, Cascola.
Motion by Cascola. Do I have a second? Roth. Second by Councilman Roth. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is, I'd have a motion to ratify my appointments of the City Council Liaisons. Do I have a motion and a second?
Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilman Ragsdale, second. Second by Councilwoman Cook. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And Ms. Cook, I would expect you to be at the next planning and zoning meeting. So, huh?
So, I'm planning and zoning still for one more time?
Well, it's because when we last had the meeting, you asked if it was last, and I said, "No, you got one more." So, you have one more to go, so you can say your goodbyes to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And Mr. Cascola, you will, after that, you'll be at the June one. So, if you want to come and, at the first meeting, for the Planning and Zoning Meeting in May, you can do that.
I'm going to have to miss the first one in May. My daughter is being inducted into the National Honor Society.
That's fine. Well, Debbie's still going to be sitting on P&amp;Z that night, anyway. So, the rest of you, look at your board and commissions and see when your meetings are, and please attend. Next, nomination for President Pro Tem. Mr. Cascola.
I'd like to nominate Jeff Kuhn.
Motion by Mr. Kewen, by Mr. Cascola. Do I have a second? Roth. Second by Councilman Roth. Any other nominations? Ms. Ragsdale.
Thank you. The role of pro tem is more than just a title. I'll admit, only one person reached out to me asking for support before tonight's meeting, and that says a lot. We are a council of 10 elected officials, each entrusted by our constituents with a vote and a voice. To be excluded from these conversations as someone chose, as someone chosen by the people to represent them reflects a concerning lack of respect and collaboration. The role of pro tem means attending more than, means attending meetings other than council meetings and reporting back to the council what occurs at those meetings. In the last two years that I have been on the council, we have not had that. The role of pro tem means working with new council members to make them feel welcome and to guide them through their responsibilities as liaison for our commissions. The role of pro tem means filling in when the mayor is absent, and that should be more than just when he misses a council meeting. For these reasons, I am proud to support my colleague and nominate my counterpart, Debbie Cook.
Okay. Do I have a second for that?
I would just like to say, as I was going door-to-door for over a year now, there was one name that I regularly heard, especially in the senior living communities, and that was Debbie Cook. They spoke very highly of her, speaking about how she would regularly go through the communities and donate food. Also, when issues would arise, they could count on her to come and help. They gave me examples, like some utility bills and things that she helped with. So, from what I've seen, Debbie Cook is a well-respected in the community, whose dedication is widely recognized. Her longstanding service and consistent commitment are qualities that I admire personally and aspire to emulate as a fellow council member. So, that is why I'd like to second the nomination for Debbie Cook as pro tem.
Okay. Any other nominations? Have a motion to close nominations?
Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilwoman Ragsdale. Do I have a second? Roth. Second by Councilman Roth. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Nominations are closed. We're going to vote on the first nomination. We have Mr. Kewen, which was nominated first. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear two no's. Ms. Cook, would you like a roll call? Roll call.
Roll call for Cook, okay.
No, roll call for Kewen.
Kewen, okay. Councilmember Cascola.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Bib.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ragsdale.
No.
Councilmember Wexler.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
No.
Councilmember Cook. Councilmember Cook. Councilmember Roth.
Yes.
Councilmember Kewen.
Yes.
Seven yes, three no?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Cook, do you want to, you want to? All right. Do we have to vote on the second one, Kevin?
No, sir.
Okay. Congratulations to Mr. Kewen. All right. Questions or comments on committee and commission reports? Seeing none, the stand is read. Questions or comments on the consent calendar? What's the pleasure?
Motion approved, Bib.
Second, Kewen.
Motion by Councilman Bib, second by Councilman Kewen. Council members, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Ten yes, zero no. The consent calendar's been approved. Questions or comments on Resolution 424 2025D? Seeing none. Most second to introduce?
Cascola.
Motion by Councilor Cascola, second.
Thompson.
Second by Councilwoman Thompson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. O'Keefe.
Resolution 424 2025D, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Camex Incorporated, providing for the reverse osmosis and general water treatment plant improvements project in an amount not to exceed $10,35,943.
Most second to approve?
Cascola.
Motion by Councilor Cascola, second.
Thompson.
Motion by, second by Councilman Thompson. Council members, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Nine yes, one no. Resolution D has been approved. Questions or comments on Resolution E? Seeing none. Most second to introduce?
Kewen.
Motion by Councilman Kewen, second.
Second, Wexler.
Second by Wexler. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. O'Keefe.
Resolution 424 2025E, a resolution authorizing a supplemental agreement with Kim Heck, providing for pre-treatment consultant services in an amount not to exceed $60,000.
Most second to approve?
Kewen.
Motion by Councilman Kewen, second.
Wexler.
Second by Councilman Wexler. Council members, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Ten yes, zero no. Resolution E's been approved. Questions or comments on Resolution F? Most second to introduce?
Ragsdale.
By Councilwoman Ragsdale, second.
Cascola.
Second by Councilwoman Ragsdale, or Councilwoman Cook, or Cascola. Cascola. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. O'Keefe.
Resolution 424 2025F, a resolution of support and endorsement for the Historic Preservation Commission's grant application for educational outreach materials.
Most second to approve?
Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilwoman Ragsdale, second. Second by Councilwoman Cook. Council members, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Ten yes, zero no. Resolution F has been approved. I'd have a motion to go to closed session. 6100211, legal action, cause of action, litigation involving public governmental body or any confidential or privileged communication between the public governmental body or its representative's attorneys. 6100212, leasing, purchase, sale of real estate, and 61002112, sealed bids related documents until the bids are opened, sealed proposals related documents or any documents related to negotiated contract until a contract is executed or all proposals are rejected.
So moved, Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilwoman Ragsdale, second. Kewen. Second by Councilman Kewen. Roll call, Bess.
Councilmember Wexler.
Yes.
Councilmember Roth.
Present. Yes or no?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bib.
Yes.
Councilmember Cascola.
Yes.
Councilmember Kewen.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Cook. Councilmember Ragsdale.
Yes.
All right. We'll be up in the community room at 9:25, so there's no further business. Meeting is adjourned.